Welcome to the Thursday, May 8th, 2025 meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:13 and we are meeting tonight at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We have LakeCam recording and we do have a quorum this evening with Mr. Cabral, Mr. Lynch and myself. Is anyone else recording for the record? Hearing none. The first item on the agenda is the A&R Plan for Justine's Way, 62 Fuller Shores Road. Map, block and lot 55-5-602. And map block and lot 55-55-6B. Outback Engineering, possible vote.
Hi, I'm Jack Sargent with Outback Engineering, here to present this plan of land at Justine's Way/62 Fuller Shores Road. And so we have an existing lot 13 and a lot 14. Lot 13 is a not abutable lot. And what we're doing is we are taking a portion of lot... I'm sorry, this is lot 4 in lot 13. And what we're doing is we're taking a portion of lot 13, which is 1.16 acres and creating a lot 14 and combining the existing lot 4 and lot 14 to create a new lot 14, which would have a total acreage of 3.57 acres.
Alright, does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? So it's basically a land swap?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like everything that we look for is shown.
The wetlands impacted.
Nope, they just taken some land from one...
Put it onto another.
To the other.
Yep.
Straightforward enough? No questions?
No questions.
I'm gonna approve.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the A&R for Justine's Way and Fuller Shores Road.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Carries, thank you. Alright, agenda item number two. Public hearing, site plan review for 19 Main Street, continued to this evening. Upon the application for a site plan review submitted by C.D. Dankskowitz Realty, Inc. for the construction of a proposed mixed-use retail and business development comprised of two buildings and associated site improvements. Accept request to continue until June 12th, 2025.
Make a motion to continue 19 Main Street till June 12th, 2025?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Agenda item number three. Unfortunately, we are not able to open it because we don't have a quorum. John would have to recuse and so Jack and myself are not able to open this. We did speak to the applicant and just let him know that we will be re-advertising and get this on the agenda for May 22nd. So I won't be opening that public hearing. We will open it at our next meeting. Moving on, agenda item number four. Notice of intent to lay out a portion of Harrison Ave, possible vote. Now, this item... I wasn't sure what it was when I first saw it. I thought it was a street acceptance, but it is a street that the town already owns. It's actually being done in conjunction with the Route 79 improvements. And as they were going through the various plans, I guess they found some discrepancies between the plans on file and what was built. So because of those discrepancies, the town has to approve the new revised layout at town meeting. So this evening, what we need to do is make, similar to like how we do with any town meeting items, we have to make a recommendation to town meeting. So this is really just...
Formality.
A formality, exactly. I talked to the DPW Director. It really doesn't change anything for him. Obviously, when the road is completed, it's gonna help him in that they're not filling potholes constantly. And we already own the road, so the drainage will be improved. So it really, it's not gonna, it's not putting any additional strain on the town. It's just formality. So if somebody would like to make a... Unless you have any questions, comments? No, okay. If someone would like to make a recommendation to town meeting?
Yep. Make a motion to make a recommendation at town meeting for...
Yeah, like a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation for Harrison Ave.
Second.
Make a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And there's actually gonna be, I guess, three more of these that we can expect to see along the same lines. Alright, agenda item number five. Review the following zoning board of appeals petition. A Veloso 301 Pond Lane. So we have... The petition from ZBA. It looks like they're gonna knock down and rebuild on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns on this?
It's you, right? Do you wanna come up or...? No, he's right.
I didn't know it was on the agenda until...
Oh, okay.
It's a chance on TV.
Well, so typically, we just, we review and if there's anything that we wanna send comments over to ZBA, we just send the comments. We don't make any formal...
Yeah, no, I didn't.
Action on it. It's more of like a recommendation. Typically, we don't send a comment on residential. There is, it is going from quite a... Did you want it like that?
Guys, just continue on. Continue on.
So it is changing from a lot coverage of 27.6 to 39.1. So it is a significant lot coverage increase. We typically let zoning board review residential unless anybody wants to send any comments.
Nope, I had, I had one question.
Yeah?
That's why, on the front step back, it says, is this at 1.1 feet? Existing and then the newest 24.8? Was it like an existing shed or something?
Oh, there's a, there's a carport.
Okay, alright, yeah. It just, it looked funny when it was like one foot and then...
This is existing.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, alright, yeah, no, that was my only question. Cause it looked like it was crossed out and it looked one foot one. I don't, I don't have any qualms with this really, to be honest.
Kathy, does Board of Health review?
Yes.
Zoning Board, okay.
Yeah, that was my only other thing, but I know that it would go in front of Board of Health. Because you're keeping the existing septic.
Yes.
As is, yep. And it's, and again, this Board of Health thing, but septic, I'm assuming is for... Cause you're going from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom.
It's a two-bedroom septic, they restricted to.
Right, that's what I mean, so yes, that's, I'm assuming that that was, that was...
It's a two-bedroom septic.
Yeah. Yep, nope, that was it. I don't have any other comments.
Yeah, I mean... It's, it's a significant lot coverage in a, you know, close to the pond. I know we have a lot of those smaller existing dwellings that... I don't know what kind of, they're familiar with their precedents, I guess, the zoning board. But... Anything, Jack? So... I mean, I guess, as far as access, it's just... I guess that's up to the fire department, if he's weighed in.
Residential usually doesn't go down to a fire.
Oh, okay.
Unless there's... You know, sometimes we had started to send them, you know, things on the pond just because the access can be tough.
Right.
Down there.
Lord of the scenes.
So, but he hasn't seen that, no. I'm sorry.
But she just said he doesn't typically.
He doesn't typically see it. You know, Nancy had started, you know, inspecting them to see if she felt that there might be a problem. So that she did not see this on them.
Okay. I mean, I guess that would be, you know, just make sure that there's access and... That's what we had sent back for the previous one. I know access was a concern, but... Yeah. I mean, I'm concerned about the lot coverage, I guess, just because it is so high in a area close to the water. But if we're good without sending comment, then do you wanna make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to make no comment on 301 Pond Lane.
Alright, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, agenda item number six. Approve the March 27, 2025 minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, any questions, edits?
No.
No.
It looked good for me. I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 27th, 2025 meetings as drafted.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agenda item number seven, site plan review. The first part of this. So we have in here, in our packet, we have the application for site plan review. And we wanted to look at it for two reasons. One, we had talked about adding some piece of the inspections to it so that people understand when they come into site plan review, they expect certain peer-review items. And then the second, the second reason to look at it is because now that we have ADU approved, we have had interest in that and we kinda wanna differentiate between site plan review for commercial purpose and site plan review for ADU purpose. I did look at what some other towns are doing. And we have a few examples here that Kathy was good enough to print out for us. So Turo has... Pretty, it's pretty... It's straightforward and it kinda reminds me of what we have with the checkboxes. It asks for the form, with the copies, the plan and other information with the copies, a butters list, cause we do, so I didn't speak with town council and we do have to notice for these as well. It talks about a filing fee. I don't think we've...
Haven't discussed that yet.
Yeah, we haven't even gotten to a filing fee for it. And it looks like... So Turo's asking for $50. This town of Princeton is asking for $100. And let's see, Middleborough is asking for $250. So they're kind of all over the place. 50, 102, 50. Right now, I think it's $100 per lot when we do an A&R?
Is 250.
250, okay, 250 per lot.
Well, 250 if you're changing the lot lines, but if it's a new lot, it's 500.
500, okay. So I don't know if we wanna have something that mimics that. I mean, if ours is for 250 for a lot line, 250 for ADU, Middleborough's is at 250.
Yeah.
When we talk about the filing fees though, that's built into our rules and regs. Can we change the filing fees without a public hearing?
Well, it's a brand-new one, so... I mean, if you, it just wouldn't be in those, like it would be separate.
Okay.
I mean, when you read, when that final piece is done with that, you could add it if you wanted to.
So in order to establish a fee though, we have to just put on the agenda and take a vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's another thing that we gotta look at with the filing fee.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I would think it would be fine with the 250.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
And if we put it on another agenda, we'll have other board members here, you know, hopefully they'll, if there's, you know, any more, you know, discussion.
That 250 is compatible with what?
With Middleborough.
Yeah.
Which I'm surprised that the Turo is so low too. But I don't know what else they have that might go along with it. So... It's pretty, it should be pretty simple, what we need for an ADU because there's only certain things that we can look at. Parking, when it's outside of a certain area from the rail, the setbacks. We obviously need all the copies so that everyone can review. Conservation and Title V still has to apply, you know, wetlands protection still applies, Title V still applies. Middleborough has one that says, obtain verification from tax collector's office, stating all taxes have been paid to date. That makes sense.
Yeah.
So... My thought was, if we wanna look at... Our site plan review and just kind of, I'd say maybe take off whatever doesn't apply and then leave it, condense it and probably have town council just review it and make sure that it's in line with the ADU guidelines.
So we're gonna use our site plan review as like a guideline and go from there?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking. Cause it already has all the information that we wanna see. First page and a half. So the first middles. Completed signed site plan application, that's this form. Plan must show the name of the applicant. Number three, if the owner of record is a corporation, the name and address shall be submitted. Number four, if more than one owner, shall be signed by each owner. Number five, nine full-size contact prints, one copy of reports, stormwater traffic, et cetera. That's the one where I guess we don't really need stormwater and traffic for an ADU.
Right.
So we could take that off. Six prints measuring 11 by 17, cause we still need the copies to circulate. Number eight, a PDF file of the entire submittal, emailed to the town planner board administrator. So, I mean, that makes sense to have it as a PDF as well. If they're gonna submit paper copies, have the electronic file. A dollar deposit for the fee. A check to cover advertising, if that makes sense, because if we have to advertise it. 11, a dollar deposit will be required for independent consultants for engineering review and our legal counsel satisfying the provisions of site plan by law. That seems excessive for ADU.
Yeah.
Number 12, an original current sign W9. I don't think an individual homeowner's necessarily gonna have that. That's basically for payment, right? Paying back of...
I think that's some point that a developer would submit.
Yeah.
Number, so I would say so far, take out number six, 11, 12. Number 13, a copy of the deed vesting title in the current owner. That makes sense to show that they have ownership. Number 14, a notice from the tax collector for all lots involved.
Yep.
That kinda makes sense with what Middleborough's asking, make sure there's no outstanding.
Yeah, back taxes.
Number 15, the names of all owners of record of all abutting properties and those within 300 feet of the property line based on the latest available assessors records. That makes sense too?
Yeah.
Okay. 16, date of site plan, all revisions shall be noted and dated. That's pretty standard. Number 17, the plan must show the name, address and seal of the registered professional engineer and registered professional surveyor and registered landscape architect who prepared the plan. I don't know if we need all that for...
I don't, I don't think you would.
I mean... So I guess that's a question that I have, like...
Yeah.
Do we want just the professional engineer? I don't think we're gonna need surveyor and architect unless it makes sense... Cause we're not, we can't require architectural requirements for ADU. So I know we can't require that.
That's landscape architect.
Oh, that's right, landscape architect. Yeah, but still, we're not gonna require landscape. Well, because for ADU, because it's allowed by right now in the state of Massachusetts, there's certain limitations to what we can require them to do. And so, you know, we can't require certain design features and landscaping.
I think this is saying like a professional, like a civil engineer would be... I guess we gotta ask that question, do we have to, you know what I mean? Does it have to be?
Like take this out?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should ask that, maybe ask town council or something.
And actually, let's see, is there another one that...
Yeah, see, the African checklist, original 14.
Yeah, so it just says, so for part of the checklist on Turo, it just says, prepared by a registered professional engineer or registered sanitation, sanitarian.
Yeah, I think we have to leave that one in there. Cause again, you want a drawing of someone that's gone out and a professional surveyed it and said that they could put it where it can go, you know?
Okay. So... Engineer and surveyor and registered landscape architect?
I don't know if this is the and or, you know, I mean, the plan that must show the name of the professional engineer or and or reg, I mean, I don't know, should they say like, should they say and or anyways? Like, do we usually, we don't have all three of those on our set of plans that we get, right? On a site plan review?
We haven't been, no.
It's just one stamp, right? One, one engineering stamp.
Yeah.
Jack, stop.
And honestly, I really like Middleborough's.
Yeah.
I really do. I feel like it's, we could just... The application, the assessors map, tax collector office, the copies, all the butters, the filing fee. Of course, they have the information kinda set up a little different, like in a different format, but... It asks for the zoning district, if there's an overlay. Is it on the National Historic District? Cause that counts because you can have certain limitations for an ADU in historic district. Not that we have those right now, but you can. Is it in chapter 61? I know that's one of our questions too. I feel like maybe...
Why, do you wanna keep it simple? Is that what you're trying to do?
I'd like to be able to keep it as simple as possible. But, oh, so the other, the other thing to mention is... Serpent had reached out to the town asking if we have interest in ADU guidance, I guess, on how to draft the bylaw, but since we're already past that part... I don't, I guess I should say, even though we're past that part, it couldn't hurt to have Serpent kind of check over what we have and guide us if, if there's more changes, because we know that right now we're in a holding pattern because the state has still not approved what passed at town meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
So that could help iron out any of this too down the road, but we obviously wanna have something in place prior to anything that Serpent's able to help us with. I guess, let's just have it as a question to town council. Ask her about 17. The plan shall be legibly drawn in accordance with the rules and regulations of the registry of deeds as amended pertaining to plan size, material lettering and related items. That makes sense to keep in. We want it to be able to be recorded.
Right.
Number 19, the plan scales show preferably be 40 feet... 40 inches to the inch. Oh, I think it, we actually have a typo here, huh? It's 40 feet instead of 40 inches in the parentheses. To the inch or such of the scales are the board may accept identification of the plan. And previous subdivision, zoning classification. Okay, so this talks about zoning district. Creation of new lot. And that's my decision, that's my board of appeals. Name, status, priority, bearings, location of existing buildings, wells, leach and fills, subjecting... Those are all things that we probably should see on the plan, so we...
Yeah.
Make sure that they're not building on top of anything. I mean, I'm sure, not that, I don't know. Maybe that's going too far, but I think it seems straightforward. Bounds, bricks, fences, walls, locusts map. Airplane status, varying lot requirements. But that one... That one, I don't even know if we can keep it in because with ADU the lot requirements aren't the same as the, like, you don't have to have a lot to put in ADU. You know what I mean? You don't have to have enough land area to do an A&R.
Yeah, but you can't, can you, you can't... Yeah, but you can't, you can't put an ADU in that would make your lot non-conforming. Still have to keep it within the setbacks, right?
Right, setbacks still apply, no. And I guess lot coverage.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to keep.
Okay, so yeah, that, so it does make sense to leave that in?
I don't know about the, well, with the Upland Circle, I guess, but it doesn't really matter, right?
Oh yeah, it's not even called Upland anymore. So that was like a screen grab out of the rules and regs, it's now it's Front Yard Circle. Right there, the waivers addressing each requirement.
Like, are they gonna have a waiver? Like, do we have to, they don't have to go through our waivers, right? Those are our waivers for subdivisions, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If there's no...
Yeah, there shouldn't be. Shouldn't be waivers.
I think the 20 would come out.
Yeah.
Maybe we just keep it simple. Like Middleborough did. What did Princeton do?
I know, I liked, um, with Turo, they had this sort of procedure box.
Yeah. I guess they're doing, they're kinda doing what we're doing.
Yeah, but they're asking for elevations either.
Yep, for floor plans, elevations. Affirmative declaring that ADU are rental drawings, which accessory will be rented on a twelve-month basis.
Yeah. Cause they can be a rental.
Yeah, I mean, we, we talked about that, they can be, but you can restrict that.
But you can restrict it, okay.
Can't be like a short-term rental, it has to, it can't be like, it can't be like an Airbnb or something like that, is what they were saying, wasn't that?
So the thing, so, so there's, there's like two sides to this, so obviously, so the town, so Kathy and I were talking about it, and she was saying, you know, the town already restricts it, so you're not supposed to have a temporary rental in town. However, now that these ADUs are coming, coming to town, um, and it says that, you know, you can restrict them, but on the other hand of that, when we're looking to increase revenue, one of the possible revenue streams is to add a tax on to short-term rentals. So maybe it could potentially be a revenue stream for the town, to allow the, the short-term rentals of ADUs and use it as an income stream, not just for the, you know, the residents renting it out, but as, as for the town as well. Something to consider, I guess, cause we haven't excluded it in our bylaw.
Right.
But I think we would then need a pro, a process and a procedure going forward, we'd have to, if there already is a a bylaw preventing short-term rentals, we'd have to look at that and see, you know, how the ADUs could work with it.
I'd have to really search for some stuff, I know there was talk, I don't know really what happened with that. I, it was a long time ago, it was when I first started, so. Yeah, I can try to pull that up from somewhere.
Yeah.
But definitely something to look at.
Right.
And twos.
New planner will do that.
I know, yeah, when we get a new planner.
Twos making them inspect them yearly, too. They gotta turn in leases every year and then have them inspected by the Board of Health.
Yeah, I think the Board of Health does have some regulations on the book in regards to that as well.
For the short-term rentals?
Yes.
Well, this is saying ADUs permitted under this section shall be inspected annually or as frequent as deemed necessary by the health and billing departments for compliance with public safety and public health codes.
I mean, that makes sense, if you're renting it out, you wanna make sure nobody's dying of COVID or whatnot.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be.
I don't know what other Board of Health.
Same thing with rental, it must be twelve, twelve months, you have to keep it turned in a lease every year. And I think, I think thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two can go.
Yes, I agree. Yeah.
I think everything else is...
Okay, so I have a question mark for twenty, about the waivers.
Yeah, do we need, yeah, 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 yeah.
Because, um, because we're allowing ADUs. But is there any sort of scenario that they would look for a waiver, I guess, I don't know? So I have a question about twenty. And what was the other one that we?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah, okay.
Maybe strike six, eleven, twelve. Thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
Yep. About thirty-three.
Oh, I didn't go to the next page, sorry.
Oh yeah, that's a good one to leave in, just in case it's...
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's fine.
Six, chapter sixty-one, who knows, like, if somebody has a portion of their property and now they're taking it out to build an ADU.
Yeah. Chapter landed, yeah.
All right, so...
We're gonna leave thirty-three here.
Yeah, yeah. Cause that was also on Middleborough's. So, how do we feel about condensing down, taking out those ones that we've mentioned, asking town council about those two in question, and so just like condensing it down, sending it to Amy and just asking her, how does this look for an ADU site plan review application?
Yeah, you have a file with that?
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, do we have vote on this, or no? No, okay, so we don't have to take a vote. Kathy, are you okay with sending that over to town council?
I... Check.
Okay.
Princeton has nothing of any value.
If not, let me know.
Okay.
And we'll... What's that?
Princeton has nothing of any value.
Of what?
County Princeton.
County Princeton?
And I liked either Turo's or Middleborough's.
What about it?
That has nothing to do with it?
Oh, it was just another one that we were like comparing.
Yeah, I didn't think that there's anything of any value with it that you want to incorporate.
Well, so what I liked on, on theirs, actually, was the second page where it talks about, cause it talks about this, um, planning board may ask about the following, among other things, available parking, uh, design and age of septic, but that's really something that the, that's why we need copies, what else should really review it, too.
Okay.
Outdoor, that's the other one, outdoor lighting that may be installed has to, cause they have the same, the night sky. They referenced that zoning bylaw.
Okay.
So I wonder if that's one to include. Do we add something about the lights? Or we just look at it, I guess, anyways, we'll be looking at the site plan. So if they're adding light, we can ask them to include a photometric. So... All right, so condense it down. Take off the numbers as John noted. And send to Amy to ask her if those look...
Yeah, yeah, it's certainly true.
All right, and then, once she approves it, I guess we put it on another, um, meeting, next agenda, and we'll vote to approve it. All right, the other thing that we wanted to do with the site plan review application was, um, look at the advice from peer review, and see how, or if there's a way we can add some of those items in.
Inspection.
Yeah, for the inspection, so Kathy has, we've got Beals and Thomas, has their input as well as Apex. So... It's, they're pretty consistent.
Mm-hmm.
So they both say, you know, like, an initial visit. This one has pre-con, pre-construction meeting, so if we start doing those, it would make sense to have peer review there.
Observe still water, still water.
What's that?
No, observe still water installations.
Oh, right, so this, that was one of the questions, oh, do you, do you want the guy there to look at the hole? And, well, this, this, according to them, they do check the bottom of the hole.
Well, it's, it's
And then...
no different when you go for a building inspection, you're putting a footing in, you know, I mean, Nate comes out and looks at the, at your head, at the holes, and when you're done with it at the end, you know what I mean? When doing a deck, so why wouldn't it be any different for, for us to come on and do that? Um, at the beginning to make sure you're doing it right, but...
Yeah.
So how, how much do we have them put in that, in that account for inspections?
You start with five thousand.
Right, so, based on, on like Beals and Thomas, that would be two visits and an as-built review, right? At a minimum, that'd be, that'd take forty-five hundred bucks, based on, I'm just looking at Beals and Thomas, cause they have, they had
Right.
thousand dollars per visit plus twenty-five hundred, right, so a project for them to go out there twice during that, plus that, that would be fine, and if we had to do another visit before that, review wouldn't be that bad, but... Yeah, I think we, if we put it up front, then we won't have the battles at the end of, like, I don't wanna do it, you know, I don't wanna
I know.
pay for it, cause for the other one on Main Street, they never went, obviously, we never went out there, we were never asked, told to.
Right, so which, so are, so to me, I think, if we have, what, four or five of these, that we just have as our expected um, inspections? Is there certain ones that you prefer to see over the others?
What was there, um?
Subbase material. Just the whole, one, two, three.
Do we wanna just kinda go? So let's, so let's look at the bullet points from, I guess, Beals and Thomas first. So their bullet points are, an initial visit to ensure all erosion control measures are installed and operational prior to construction. It says they'll be monitored during subsequent visits as well. Um, the next one, observation of drainage installation, both bottom of hole before systems are installed, and then again, prior to them backfilled. We would observe structure and pipe installations, not every piece, but representative check-ins, this is obviously specific to each project, but usually forty-eight visits. That does seem a little excessive.
Yeah.
Review of the subbase material prior to paving. Review of top course pavement install. These are things that do make more sense for a road. But, obvious, like we were talking about, even though they were saying it's a private site, you still wanna
Right.
make sure that it's
Yeah, definitely, the subbase.
being built to, to the specs. Review of sidewalk subbase prior to install, review of sidewalk paving install, and final punch, punch list and as-built review. I think that's definitely a, we definitely want that one. Um, and then looking at the list from Apex. So they have attend a pre-construction meeting to perform periodic construction inspections of the soil and erosion control measures, so there's that one again.
Yep.
So talking about, um, to make sure the erosion control is there, so that seems to be a consistent
Yep.
item. Uh, perform periodic construction inspections of the excavation for stormwater management facilities, basins, subsurface systems, et cetera. Number four, conduct site visits during all, all onsite infiltration tests, if any. Number five, perform construction inspections of the proposed utility connections, we have minimal utility connections.
Yeah, period, yeah, that one's like...
Right. Six, perform a construction inspection at the completion, so there's that same, you know, review the as-built at the completion. Perform a construction inspection to review the final pavement and curbing installation. So I think we should have something, a review for one of the pavement. It seems that, that way, even if they're saying this is private property, they can just expect it.
When you do the subbase, if the subbases are right, then all the others are.
Yeah, I think, before they put, cause I know that we, we did that one off of, what was that one off of, seventy-nine, like, where we had to go out, obviously, when they're trying to hold on to the, release the lots, you know what I mean, like, we have to do that stuff. So it should be, that was, obviously, they weren't doing the top course of the pavement, because they were waiting till all the construction was done. So maybe at that binder course pavement install, kinda, you know what I mean, sub, either subbase or the binder course, cause we're having to go out there doing that anyways, usually on the subdivisions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So... So the binder course install?
Mm-hmm.
So we have the initial visit for erosion control. And then one for something about the drainage, do we, do we want? Periodic construction inspections of the excavation for stormwater management facilities, basins, subsurface systems, et cetera. So, the one from Apex is kind of... So it's more vague, I guess, cause, um, the Beals and Thomas says, you know, forty-eight visits. This one is more perform periodic construction inspection of excavation uh, for the stormwater. Do we want something more specific, or?
No, it's just, it's not a dollars per visit for that one, too, you know what I mean, so they get expensive.
Right.
They'll burn through that five thousand dollars quick.
Right.
Depending on how long this project's going, but again, some of these projects might only take like one or two, if, if one, you know what I mean? I mean, I think a lot of them are gearing it towards, I think like with Beals and Thomas, they were kinda gearing it towards like, you know, some of these might not be required, because of like, more like a hospital visit, you know what I mean, for a project of that size.
So... Does, so say from, the one from Apex, number three, is that kind of vague where it leaves it open, that periodic construction inspections, and we can say we want two inspections of the?
Yeah, minimum of two, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we have the initial erosion, erosion control. Uh, periodic, with a minimum of two for the stormwater. Review of binder course. And review of as-built.
Mm-hmm, yeah, full punch list as-built, yeah.
Okay, and then do we add a fifth if we get to the point of pre-construction meeting, where, um, if we have when we have a town planner again? Or do we just have the town planner attend that and not the peer review?
Yeah, I think we have the town planner.
So, are we good with four?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the initial, I'm taking the wording from the Beals and Thomas, first bullet point, but just the first word, I mean, first sentence, sorry, not the second sentence.
From Beals and Thomas?
Yeah. So the first...
Initial visit to ensure all erosion control measures are measured and operational prior to any construction, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then...
I'm sure they're gonna look at that while they're out doing the other ones, right? So I think that intent was.
Okay. Well, then, you think, you think it'll be, so, well, if the next one would be periodic, um, inspections with a minimum of two for stormwater.
Yep.
So that comes from number three from Apex, but we'd include, perform periodic construction inspections with a minimum of two of the excavations for stormwater, oh wait, is that not the right word? Perform periodic construction inspections of the excavations for the stormwater management facilities, basins, subsurface systems, et cetera, oh, so maybe at the end, with a minimum of two?
Mm-hmm.
With a minimum of two, do we have to be specific as in site visits or inspections?
I was, uh, so say, I didn't, observation of drain, so which one are you gonna do?
Um, so I was looking at number three from Apex, and adding at the end.
Number three, okay, Apex.
So at the end of it, say, with a minimum of two inspections.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's fine.
At the end, okay. So we have one, two, and then the next one, we agreed on the review of binder course?
Sure.
Pavement install. So one, two, three. And the fourth one is final punch list and as-built review. And so we have four, that they're gonna be expected, and then I had... So, in trying to figure out where to put it on the site plan review application, I was looking at the front page of our site plan review application. That second paragraph, where it talks about any technical services required to assist the planning board in preparing its written response shall be included as part of the ESCO account fee fifty-three G. And then after that, probably say, review to include, but not limited to the following. And then list those four items.
Yeah, yeah.
Really the underside nearby submits. Really, the underside here by subits.
Yep, so but so like in between, in between that second paragraph and where it goes into that underside.
Okay.
Put it in insert a sentence that says review to like to include, but not limited to
The following.
the following, and we have one from the Beals and Thomas, two from number three from Apex, three is one, two, three, fourth bullet point from Beals and Thomas, and four is eighth bullet point.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yep.
What do you think, Kathy? Does that make sense?
I I guess so, and then I can also, you know, double check with Apex and say, see if their opinion, if this is like really the kind of the minimum, but the best of that.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, confirm that.
Yeah, just say that planning board discussed, and these seem to be what we're.
Yeah, these are what we want for the minimum, and then obviously, the other ones go on, but like, I don't want it, if you put nine of them down at like eight, nine hundred bucks a pop, then the five thousand dollars, like, probably will be ten thousand dollars, and then
Right.
we'll start.
Yeah.
That would cover the five thousand dollars that they've already agreed to put up. And then we don't have to fight them on, this is what you're doing. This is what we this is what we're expecting up up front.
Right.
Okay, so Kathy, you'll have two different versions of the site plan review application and one one specific to ADU, one specific to site plan review with these items included. And we'll put, so once again, we'll put that on a um
Future agenda.
future agenda. I don't think so far, how's um May twenty second looking so far?
Open two and four. This is gonna be continued right away anyway, we'll talk, but yeah.
We have to have a birthday.
That's your birthday?
Yeah, day after.
Oh.
Big festivities, big eight oh.
Oh.
There might be one other thing on it. I I don't recall. I know you the open space plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I I don't recall what the other thing is.
Okay. I think we had more of the road, the seventy nine items.
Yes.
But so other than that, I mean, that should be fine.
Yeah.
If we put this on for the twenty second, and if let me know if you can't get to it, that way I can.
How long, Rob?
Yep.
Subdivision.
Okay. That's coming back then.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for the proposal.
Okay.
Don't think that's gonna get done, but.
Okay, all right, all right, so this should be good to put on for our next meeting, then, keep working at it. All right. Moving on, agenda item number eight.
Mystery of
Administrative update, signs in residential zones update, so we did get a response from the zoning enforcement officer.
Boy.
And he did um
Impressive.
Get get those things addressed, so
Impressive.
we got that was good, good response, that those signs that were concerns, and it looks like the woman who had attended, she did reach out to him as well, so.
Oh, you're seeing?
Yep. So that's good that her concerns were addressed. Planning consultant update, I I actually expected to have an update. I thought I was gonna get an update from Lacy. I don't think I'd seen one come through. But oh, let me see. Okay, so it sounds like what they're looking for is somebody in house one day per week, but that wouldn't work with what um Nancy was looking for.
Okay.
She didn't want to be in house, so that is that, but we are still pursuing a town planner.
Okay.
Rules and regs, driveway lantern covenant. Just like Bob Mather had promised, he did forward this over to us.
Mm hmm.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Um, Kathy, did you have a chance? Did you send this to Serpad?
You know, I I don't recall, so I will double check that tomorrow.
Or and if not, I can I could forward it to them, too, because I know we had talked about including this in rules and regs when we go through it, and and maybe it doesn't have to be a covenant so much as like, just include something like this as a requirement instead of streetlights, because we know that that's something that we typically waive anyway.
Yeah, all the time.
All right. Serpad. Next item is the, oh, and thank you, Bob Mather, if you're watching. Thank you for sending that. The next item is Ten Harding Street. This was something when I was in this past week, Kathy pointed out, I guess the covenant that I had signed for Harding Street, I didn't go through it, I didn't, you know, we had a lot of back and forth.
Yeah.
Kathy went through those conditions, and I guess she had put a um item eleven instead of thirteen, because that was one that we went back and forth, that, you know, with the eleven versus thirteen. Uh, so it was a scrivener's error. She was able to go back and she verified by watching the meeting, and she did get this little corrective amendment to the site plan review. So so I had signed it, and then the applicant hadn't had also
Signed.
uh filed it with the town clerk, so
Well, I filed it.
or you filed it with the town clerk, and then the applicant came in and saw that it was it was different than what we had um discussed, so now we have to file this with the town clerk. So it's literally just um and once again, a matter of we went back and forth so many times.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what threw me was the occupancy permit.
Right.
So I think that's why I might have mixed it up.
Because we tried to avoid
That, right.
the occupancy permit
Yep.
as a stipulation, so and that was just horrendous, because how much back and forth it was, but thank you for watching that meeting and making sure that was
It's a long meeting.
All right, so do we need to take a vote on this? So vote for me to sign and have you?
You approve it as written and for you to be able to sign that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to have the corrective amendment for site plan review, or review approval for Ten Harding Street be signed by the uh planning board chair.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And do you want me to sign this copy?
Yeah, you have one.
And our next meeting is May twenty second, twenty twenty five, here at the police station. Um, and then Kathy, you did include another memo that we got from the Board of Health.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, any other? No?
Nope.
Anything in the audience? You have anything? No? All right.
I'll make make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, meeting's adjourned.